Meeting or council, special council meeting, I should say. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. You have an agenda which we are going to modify. And we will be looking at probably number three. Number five. And that's about what we'll be looking at at this point. So if we can have a motion to approve the agenda as get moved by councillor Donaldson, seconded by councillor Murphy. All in favor, raise your hand. Contradicted, carry. So any conflict of interest declaration on on any of the items that we're going to be discussing? Seeing no, no one. So. Number three is we have regular council meeting of minutes of June the ninth. We need the motion to approve those. Moved by councillor Donaldson, seconded by councillor. Councillor Doctorow. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Contradited, carried. We have the recreation committee meeting minutes of April sixteen, need a motion for those. Moved by councillor Bork, seconded by councillor Albright. All in favor, signified by raising your hand. Contradited, carried. So now we go to number five. And the first one is the second reading of the land use bylaw and the municipal planning strategies. That that we just had our our public hearing on that. So I guess we're open for for discussion on this. Yes, councillor Sret.
I'd like to move that we approve the second reading of the L U B N A B S.
We have a seconder, seconded by councillor LeBlanc. Any discussion? Seeing none. I'm going to call for the question. All in favor, signified by raising your right hand. All opposed? Carried. Be by law nine, a noise exemption. We've had a request to for an exact exemption. Have you all had the opportunity to read the request? Are there any discussions on it? Can we have a motion to approve the request? Moved by councillor Albright. Seconded by councillor LeBlanc. And a question by councillor Sret.
Just a question, should we be sending letters out to the residents of that area on this planned? Yes, the music that's going to be played and that. Should the letter be sent out to the closest residents? Just a question like that, maybe to the C A O or or is it a practice that we would normally do? So the residents would know what's going on?
So, Mr. Chair, so your your grant of exemptions by council instructions are included in the the noise bylaw. So any, so number seven would would indicate what the application process is to council to be granted an exemption from any of the provisions. So the person who was was asking for an exemption realizes that it is after nine o'clock and therefore against the intent or of the noise bylaw. So so counsel by resolution may may refuse to grant or accept an exemption so granted shall specify a time period of not greater than ten years. It's a long period, shall be confirmed in writing by the C A O. Shall include such terms and conditions as the council deems appropriate. So if you if you wish to include terms and conditions that the council deems appropriate, you may do so via motion. So if that is, if to your question, councillor Sret, deputy warden Sret, if that is something you feel would be important for you to make a decision, you can make that decision to do that. So section eight, in deciding whether or not to grant an exemption under section seven, shall give consideration to the social or economic benefit to the proposed activity to the municipality. The volume, nature, duration and consistency of noise emission. The proximity and nature of a budding or adjacent land uses and the hours of operation proposed activity, some of which obviously has been noted in the request. Any other factor relevant to balancing the interest. So 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 applications for an exemption for an activity of less than seven days duration do not require a public hearing pursuant to the section or notice pursuant to section eleven. All other exemptions, renewals or exemptions or amendments expanding the scope of an exemption shall only be granted after a public hearing at which council should give the applicant and any person interested in the application an opportunity to be heard. So the exemption for an activity of less than seven days duration is is item nine in the bylaw. So under that bylaw, if we compare that to the request, it, the the event does not, the activity does not exceed seven days in and of itself. We just go back to the letter here. I know it's a long answer to the question, but.
No, that's okay.
So the request is two hours between nine and twelve, depending on the month. However, the permit for the sound system is being asked between July and December. So depending on your interpretation, the length of the permit requests certainly is for more than seven days. Right? If that's the case, then the might be a public hearing would be in order. Now, public hearing would be would would require the request to be to be done specifically in a public hearing by definition would would be something that would be advertised.
That that would satisfy what I my question because that's what I had read myself.
So, and I just defer quickly to our clerk to confirm that what I've said is in some way resembles what your interpretation would be as well.
Yes.
So I think that depending on your interpretation of what the request is, you could absolutely allow a permit for, let's say, the month of July because you know it's only certain periods of time in the month of July. But anything beyond that, you may want, you may want to consider a more public request.
I guess I just wanted to protect us as a municipality that we didn't let anybody, nobody knew about what was going on and you know, we did it and we didn't send out an notice and we get some feedback, some flack. And that that was my concern. But then, yeah, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
So if we had to go to public hearing, that's a long process again. He wouldn't have his, he wouldn't have his, his permit by by July for it to start in July.
No, he would not. So you can, as council, you have, you have, this is all in your court. The council take whatever conditions it wishes. I don't believe that you can authorize the entire request without a public hearing. You but you could authorize the request for the month of July and then have it revisited. Because and so you can reject this particular request and instruct the applicant to to do something different. Because we can allow that entire amount of time in my interpretation without some form of public consultation. And if the developer is looking to do something in July, which he is, then he would be allowed to do so in July, but 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 not more than seven days without a public hearing.
Oh, seven, seven days in the month, not seven consecutive days.
Well.
How is the? Someone wrong thing here. What does it say?
Don't worry about that, but I just want to be sure we don't get slapped.
Now, there's there's no recommendation attached, so the question is is a valid question. So here is, all right. Applications for an exemption for an activity of less than seven days duration do not require a public hearing.
Okay.
Less than seven days duration. It does not say seven days in a row. My interpretation of that, because you're looking for an exemption after the hours of nine. If if he was to do this through the day up until nine o'clock, he would be in compliance. He wouldn't need an exemption. So the exemption is for anything past nine o'clock. So you're not going to go from nine o'clock to nine in the morning. So it's not a consecutive day. The interpretation is that if you have an event more than seven days, seven days or more, so if he has seven events.
Okay.
Or less, he would not require a public hearing. If he has more than seven, which the letter suggests very strongly he would, that he needs a public hearing. So the request either has to be tailored to only be for the month of July, for instance, or to a limit of seven days with any sort of extension being through public hearing. Or rejected outright according to this bylaw. My suggestion would be that you can certainly you can, you can accept this request with conditions. And the conditions in in this instance would be how long he actually has the ability to do this.
Right. So, councillor Diggan.
Thank you. I'm just looking though, this could possibly resolve itself in a month's time or so because he's looking for this permit due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and the regulations that are set in by it when he wrote that letter, but we know that they've opened up quite a bit since then. And by the end of July, it could be open again that you could have a group like he normally has up there and would not necessarily need a permit to up till nine o'clock at night, which he never had needed, nor does anyone else need, actually.
That's true.
That's absolutely another unusual consideration of this request is that the reason why he's asking is because of the COVID restriction. Could change drastically in six months. So that gives you more reason to put conditions on the request.
Well, we, my my view is that we could do it for, like you said, with with conditions that he could at least do it in July. And then we'd have to revisit it if if he still needs more or whatever. So at least it gives him the opportunity to do what he needs to do for the month of July. That would be my suggestion.
Right. And so I just want to clarify, Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify one thing. If you provide the exemption for whatever the period is, you are giving, you are giving that business and that person permission to do it. So if you receive complaints, the complaints would be denied because you have given that exemption for that particular period of time now. And and so if you're only going to get like, so so the fact of the matter is that somebody with a little microphone may not may not be disruptive at all. We don't actually know that until they do it. And and so if we receive complaints, that might influence your your decision to move forward with with this exemption, right? I I alls I can say is 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 if you make a decision to provide an exemption, you are, you are, you are basically allowing that activity to occur. In a way that noise bylaw would apply previous to nine P M.
But but I I don't, I I didn't understand that if we did July that we were giving an exemption that that he he that we could give him July and probably he wouldn't get the beyond the seven days. I thought that's what we were talking about. I'm not sure then. I must misunderstood that that July, because we said something about we could give him July without without a hearing. He he can't if he has it, he can't if he has it, if he has one every every night, which I doubt that he's going to. I'm not sure. If you only had seven in the month of July, then he wouldn't be, we, it wouldn't be an exemption. He would fall under under the guidelines that that are set out. Right?
No, Mr. Chair, he would, if any, any, any sounds outside of nine o'clock.
Oh, yeah, exemption for that. I'm sorry.
Right, we put him outside. So.
I I misunderstood again. I I thought you meant that we weren't going to follow the 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 regulations. No, we're following regulations, but he needs he needs the exemption to have it after nine, up to seven days.
Correct. And if more than seven days, and that's the that's the difficulty, he probably couldn't tell you how many days he's going to do it in July because it depends on the clear sky.
Exactly.
And 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 the interest of a of a customer, right? So we don't actually know how many days in July he he will have it and therefore he he, if he did it more than seven, then he would require some form of public hearing.
Exactly.
You could probably do a conditional acceptance for a period of time and and then seek immediately to do advertising for a public hearing. I suspect that in the case of, as it relates to noise, what that would look like is that we would look at the radius of the people that could be impacted by that noise and they would be directly contacted.
Right, exactly.
But there would also be a form of advertising that would be required.
Right. Well, that's whatever council wants to do, I guess. It's up, it's up, councillor Sret.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there not, Mr. Chair?
Did we move? No, I don't think we, we. There was no motion on the floor in that one, not that I'm aware of. I asked for this.
Yes, there is, Danny.
Yes.
Oh, yes, it was moved by, it was moved.
We made the motion.
You're you're right. You're right.
Question?
The question is called. So.
So just, just so that we're clear, the motion that is set right now is contrary to your noise bylaws.
But it relaxes space music. It's not rock and roll and disco.
It it it's your decision, council.
I made my mind up. So what?
I I would caution council to watch out because there will be people watching just like a hawk. I caution you very much so. I'm not really sorry.
Can we, my question is, if we, let's say we, if this motion is defeated, can we? Can we move to allow it for the seven days?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
So really, question has been called on this. Usually when question is called, it ends discussion and we have to vote on it.
Sorry.
I I was just going to ask, what is the motion?
The motion is that we approve this letter, this request. So really, discussion is ceases when 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 question is called. It ceases, there's no more, there's no debate. It's, we have to.
Correct, correct. Only clarification on the motion.
Clarification of the motion is all we can.
Correct.
For, we cannot, we cannot debate it anymore. So question has been called. All in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. One, two, three. All against. One, two, three, four, five. The motion as it stands is is defeated. Now, if we want to give this letter, this one here, this request is is defeated. However, can we have a motion to allow him for the seven days? Is that, is that proper?
Would he have that for?
If he's asked for, I think he'll take whatever he can get for now, but.
On on the question, Mr. Chair, you as council have the right to place conditions on his request?
Yes.
The 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 defeating of the of the motion does not exclude that opportunity for you to do.
Okay.
Other option would be to say, try again, sir. Understanding the the rules that are in place.
Okay.
The the gentleman that has received, that has delivered the request is aware of the land of the of the noise bylaw, is aware of the law.
Yes. Yes. So we can, we can we can modify this then. And vote on it again?
You can choose to set conditions on his request.
Conditions on the request.
Be a motion? Or you can ask the applicant to resubmit.
Okay.
Based on the lack of understanding of what seven days actually looks like.
Exactly.
Those are your options, or nothing, or you can reject it and be done.
Yes.
I would like to 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 make a motion that we that we allow the the gentleman who in the deep sky observatory, it's no secret that we give him the seven days as according to our our bylaw. And then it'll give him a chance possibly to reassess what he has to do and send us another letter. But I would certainly like to make that motion.
Do we have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Albright. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none.
Question?
Question has been called. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Contradited, carried. Okay. That keeps falling here. The next one is elections. It looks like, I mean, we had decided to have paper ballots along with the electronic voting. But with the situation that we're in, it it appears like probably the safest way to have this election and to make sure is to go entirely with electronic voting. Councillor LeBlanc.
I'll move that in the 2020 election, due to COVID nineteen, we implement solely an electronic voting ballot for municipality of our own.
Okay, is that a seconder, councillor Murphy?
Yes.
You're seconding that. Any discussion on that? We've we've had that in in twenty twelve. We had, we had some concerns. We went with the paper and the and the electronic in twenty sixteen. So I'm not sure. I mean, I know some people are probably going to be disappointed with that. I've I've heard some people that I hope, I hope we don't have to go the same way with with the phone, they call it telephone voting or whatever. But if that's the choice we have, that's the choice we have. Councillor Albright, sorry, I didn't want to.
I think that's just what I was going to say. I think we're going to have some people who are disappointed and I think we have some, we will have some people who won't vote because of this. But I really don't think we have a whole lot of other options because we just don't know what's coming. So as as much as I don't really like this option, I think it's probably the best option given the current situation.
Yeah. I think you're right. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent in favor of this option either, but I think we have to look at the the times we're in and and what we have to do. Any other discussions? Councillor Donchamall.
Yes, you know, I I know the the segment of the population is that, you know, will I would be uncomfortable voting electronically, the ones who traditionally use the paper ballot are the older people and they're the people who are most vulnerable if there is a second wave or anything like that. So I I'm still of the opinion that I don't want to give it to anybody in my community, especially somebody that's might be, I guess, older than me. How's that?
Councillor Sret.
Just a quick comment. It's not only the older people. I've had some people tell me that you don't trust the electronic voting. There's questions about what had happened during the the election for the school board and where they found out who had voted for what. And the first thing they were called at home, how did they find their name if it was supposed to be electronic and private? Yada, yada, yada. So there are people that will not vote unless it's a paper ballot. But but again, I I wish you you doing the week before the election, people could go to an advanced poll. If they wish so and go with a paper ballot, just at that advanced poll for that week prior to the the day of the election, I wish we could do that. Yeah, it would just be two, a couple of advanced polls. But but again, I I will support just the electronic on the other side. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councillor Diggan, did you have something? No?
I was just gonna back up what everyone's saying. I'm sorry. I really wish that we could go with the paper ballot as well, but we we don't even know what it's gonna, what October is gonna bring with, you know, is there going to be a second wave? Is it going to be, people even going to be allowed to get out and vote and stuff like that? So I'd say the best thing we can do right now is work on this. Make it accessible for everyone that wants to vote, have help out there for them and go go like that this time around.
C M U, she had something?
Councillor Bork is ahead of me.
Councillor.
My question is, we're voting for electronic voting. I agree with that. That's what it is now. So save later on, things are more open and people can go about as usual. Are we allowed to have, change our mind and have both? Can we have paper and electronic? Can we decide later on or be too late?
It's possible to do that later on. I don't know the absolute drop deadline would be. Elections Nova Scotia wants to know exactly how we're going to run our elections. So there's that. And then there's also the the logistics and coordination around it. So if if you had to revisit it again and it's not impossible, it's highly non-recommended. But it's it's not for us to decide that, right? I would, I would probably provide information to council to let you know what the deadline, absolute deadline might be surrounding that because we have advertising, we have all these things that we need to do. And of course, that has to be specific to what we're doing. So, yes, you could probably revisit this is is the short answer. But let's, we can't wait too long. Just, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just wondering, even, okay, so say if we did vote for like, we're we're voting for electronic voting. Can we, can we do like we usually do electronic and paper now? And then then when if if we can't do paper, we just drop it or is it cost too much?
Well, I mean, right now, your decision on record is to do both. So if you choose to not change that, then the motion on the floor really ought to be defeated. And 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 so that if that's your choice, if your choice is to just to go the all electronic route as we're recommending, the motion would would be in the affirmative. Now, to change our mind again, again, it's it is possible. It's possible. It's just a logistical piece and and advert. Uh, it, it's just a logistical piece and, and advertising, just to make sure we have the, we have it in place. Uh, in time. So confuse the voter.
That's right, because you're gonna have, like, like you said, uh, to your muse, we have. There, there's gonna be some ads that are gonna start coming out. And then once we put the ads out, everything has to be explained on how we're gonna do things. And once we do that, we can't, we can't change, because there's deadlines of when these ads have to go out too, right?
Yes.
Time that these ads have to go out prior to the election. So once those ads go out, we're stuck with what we're, we're gonna be doing. Uh, a- and I think that's gonna start probably by the end of July.
It's typically late July when you would have to get that out, so you do meet another time. So if the world changes drastically, and it could, right, if, if we're allowed to do a lot more, then, then you can revisit it. Uh, then, uh, it will just take more, or more organization on our part to, to, to make the adjustments. Um, yeah, the only thing on the e-voting that was commented on people being called on the, uh, school board election. Right, so, uh, Warden, uh, Sret made that point. Um, they were contacted because people were aware that they voted. That information is public information. In fact, uh, if it's a paper ballot, your name is listed as being somebody who has voted. How they voted is, is not known, is, and, and has been proven in the court of law. That there is no way that the software company could distinguish if Counselor Sret had voted for. Counselor Sret, or he voted for Counselor Muse, uh, in an election. The issue you're referring to had to do with the African American, uh, African Nova Scotian, uh, position. That, uh, there were an enormous amount of votes that didn't make sense to. Uh, the person who lost, and so challenged the election. And as a consequence, those people were contacted because they voted in the African Nova Scotian election. And in many cases, they voted improperly. Uh, they did not realize that it was the African Nova Scotian. They thought it was Tri-County or, 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 or another election. So they got confused, unfortunately, and quite a few people did. So since then, there have been changes and most of that confusion, uh, Deputy Warden, was actually not e-voting, it was more telephone. Yes, uh, because e-voting has a lot more controls associated with it, like, are you sure you want to go over that person? Are you sure you gotta click, click, click? Versus the telephone, it's like, press one, press two, and people panic, right? So. So, so, so I just wanted to clarify that because it, it's not. Um, just don't want people to misunderstand what actually happened in that election. So.
Okay, uh, Counselor Don Chumal.
Oh, yeah, I just, I mean, we, we've got to, uh, it's an election, we gotta be transparent. Uh, and we just have to let the people know the reasons why we decided we wanted to do e-voting. And I'm sure they got understand, they're all, they're all in the same situation here. Uh, I think changing, going back and forth is, is a bad ideal. We make a decision, we stick to it.
That's right. Anybody else? So we have a motion on the floor. There's no more discussion, all in favor. Signify by raising your hand. Contradited. Carried. So what do we do with the D, municipal, uh, consultation workshop?
Um, according to your policy around meeting times, uh, you're not to start, um, a topic at this hour. So we have to defer that to another meeting.
Okay. Yes.
Typically, we don't, we're not supposed to start something after nine forty-five, according to policy.
Oh, I see, okay. So this, this. Cons- uh, consultation workshop is on the twenty ninth of this month.
It is, so the input that the council will be providing, uh, will have to be done, uh, via different means, so.
And, and there's a way. You, you can fill out the form and, and, and email it to them if you want to, to.
Yes.
Have any kind of, uh, uh, input in, in what's gonna happen, for sure.
The, the purpose of bringing it to council is that you could collectively come to a decision on what the, what you think as a, as a council. Like to see happen, but as individual counselors, you're being asked to provide an opinion.
Same thing.
It's, it, it, it's optional whether or not you want to do that as a counselor or not. So you, we can, we can take your input, uh, individually and try to build something that represents you. Or you can submit your own, as individual elected officials.
Okay, that concludes what we have on the agenda. Um, we will have to meet in July anyway, probably early July. Is that correct?
Uh, we have, we don't have a date yet, uh, set for July, because typically we would take. Uh, a, a, a break, uh, in July and August. Uh, typically, we would do that by motion, in fact.
Yes.
Um, which we can do now if you wish. Um, I, I neglected to add that to the agenda, but. But typically what we do is we pass a motion to cancel the regular, regular scheduled meetings of July and August. And only meet on the request of Counsel, of the Ward.
Okay, well, we can still do that, we knowing that we're gonna have to call a meeting in, in, uh. In July anyway, so if someone wants to make that motion.
I'll make that motion that we.
Okay, moved by Counselor Don Chumal, seconded by Counselor Bork. So that would say that we, we suspend the meetings for July and August. Unless something comes up and ca- the meetings can be called with the Ward. Okay.
Adding, adding that this summer is not typical.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, signify by raising your hand. Contradited. Carried.
Moved adjourned.
Meeting's been adjourned.